Welcome to the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance with the Mayor Pro Tem. Lead us tonight, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Naomi, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Holt's Claw.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanow.
Here.
Councilmember Bond.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Brials.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Would any, would anyone like to speak to the council this evening? See Barb shaking her head. I see some other names, but I'm not, anyone speak up now or hold your peace till the end of the meeting? Hearing none, we will move right along. Old Business, first item is the Waste Management Garbage Contract Extension. City Manager and Director Todd.
Thank you, Mayor. Todd is going to provide an update. We want to foreshadow for council what we've been working and planning on. We'll be coming back as Director Todd will outline with some additional formalities relating to the Waste Management Agreement. But we wanted to give you a sufficient runway to start thinking considering what's on the plate for the city. So Director Todd, if you get us started, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see. I do not have a formal presentation, but if I'm lucky here, I'm not lucky. Apologize for a moment here. So this one's pretty simple in terms of what is going on. I'm just caught, just showing you, if everybody see it, the piece of the agenda summary there?
Yes. That's good. We can, yes.
Yeah, so basically, we've talked about this before. We have an opportunity this month to formally say to Waste Management that we would like to extend our contract. And by doing so, if we, if both parties agree to extend, it would give us two more years under the existing contract terms. Remember, our existing contract terms are quite favorable. The contract was done back in two thousand fifteen. Inflation, changes in the recycling market, lots of things have happened since then. And so an extension would be favorable for the city, both in terms of potentially retaining more favorable rates than if we went out to market and got a new contract, but also to give us some time to work on our next plan. As you know, we are short-staffed and it will take, it does take quite a while to negotiate a new contract. So what we're trying to, what we'd like to do tonight is have council authorize the city manager to issue that formal letter to Waste Management expressing our interest to extend the contract for two years. And that would then go to Waste Management and they would have an opportunity to react to that and come back to council in probably two weeks. I'm sure they will have a reaction because of the changes in the marketplace, but have them come and talk to us about is that something they'd be interested in doing and would both parties be interested in entering into negotiations? I'm assuming that's background noise. So I think that is it. I guess I'll just highlight a couple of dates there. So remember, our current contract runs through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. So this is not in a big hurry, but we have this fifteen-month period. So we really have till March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one to effect this letter. So tonight was the expedient time to have the city manager get authorization from the council to move forward. And so with that, I'll open it to questions.
If I might, Mayor, before we open the questions, the way Director Todd explained it to me is that I need to affirmatively request the extension in order for Waste Management to respond and pretty much explain to us some of the negotiating points that are going to be important to them. As I understand, we have a comparatively favorable terms compared to other communities. And so what we're asking for permission from tonight is tonight's meeting is for me to be able to ask for the extension in order to activate this discussion with Waste Management.
Councilmember Brials, you have a question?
Yeah, just to clarify there. Thank you, Mayor. As I understand it, that means that we will be asking to implement the two-year extension with no other changes to the contract. Is that correct?
Yes, that was, reading that paragraph right there, it is assumed that to extend the contract, written notice would be given and any extension, any extension granted shall be under the original terms and conditions of this contract. So that was a supposition. We put this together. We would like that to continue, whether, whether Waste Management mutually will agree to that or not, we don't know. But the way we start the, start the discussion is by formally issuing a letter.
Yeah, we, we can unilaterally extend the contract.
Right.
I can't see the rest of the screen. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Mike, Michael, are you looking for a formal motion? Are you looking for a head nod consensus? What, what direction you need? I mean, I think it makes sense for us to give them the notice and see what the reaction is and go from there.
Yes, what we would ask, Mike, or Mike Todd, thank you for moving down. My recommendation is that we have a motion authorizing the city manager two-year extension as indicated in the writing here on the the screen that Director Todd is sharing with us. So we'd ask for the formal motion with a vote respectfully.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to request a two-year extension of the Comprehensive Garbage Recyclables and Organics Collection Contract between the City of Mill Creek and Waste Management of Washington.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Did anyone abstain? Motion passes seven to zero. The second item under Old Business, in response to a few of the questions that were raised in the reports last week, who asked Michael to provide an update on Dobson Remmalar just to refresh everyone's memories of where we're at and where we're going over the next couple of months. Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And Director Todd, when I'm done, if there's anything you feel free to add or interrupt, I'm, I'm open to that. So what I want to do is provide an overview. We're going to talk then a little bit about the key content of the survey. And then I want to just back off a little and show you just an overall picture of the, the project schedule. First, with regard to the overview, we are, as we have discussed, conducting a brief online community survey to better understand community opinions and perceptions when it comes to the potential development of the DRCC site. The community survey will be open to anyone in the area to answer and will give us an initial baseline understanding of public opinion with regard to, with regard to the DRCC site. Again, we are, as you know, working with a professional communications and research firm to develop and analyze the survey. A city staff will help distribute the survey link through our communications platforms, community groups and media. Our team, internal team will be working to promote participation in the survey. Since the survey is open to all and it's being distributed in a non-random manner, in a non-random manner, it's not a scientifically generalizable survey. I am informed by the professionals that this means that we cannot calculate a margin of error. However, conducting this more scientific randomized survey would at least double the cost and could create some other potential problems that at this point, in what the budget we're working to manage, we believe that the survey that we've designed and are going forward with is sufficient. Right now, the targeted date is that the survey will be posted on our platforms on Monday, March fifteenth, and then will be open through the end of the month. And again, we'll be promoting it before and especially during to maximize community participation. With regard to the content of the survey, first, I want to say that it's, it's intended to be a very important community outreach tool for the city. This will probably be the first time that most of your constituents hear about the DRCC site and the fact that the city is even considering options. We have drafted brief introductory language explaining the direction that the council has provided to us and that you have an interest in the community providing feedback. You know, some of the, the language around that is that, you know, that council is interested in hearing from the community how to best use the four parcel site that might benefit current and future Mill Creek residents and businesses. At this early stage of planning, all of the options are on the table. The community will also hear that the site could certainly be used for a number of different uses, including recreation, entertainment, education, commerce, municipal uses, or potentially something altogether, something else. The survey will include a link to several maps of the parcels and in the general vicinity, so that people can orient themselves, familiarizing themselves with locations and the parcels, so that it's another community outreach and information tool that also then asks them for their, their opinions. The survey includes a few different questions designed to identify how the community views the current availability of a broad range of activities in the city. Everything from shopping to business climate to various recreational opportunities. We will also get feedback on the concepts in the council's guiding principles. We're going to be asking the, the community about those and get ideas for what they might like to see on the city properties. We planned, as I mentioned, the post on the fifteenth, holding it open through the thirty-first, and then we plan to share the results of the survey with council at our April thirteen council meeting. In terms of the overall project schedule beyond the survey calendar, while our overall schedule is still in flux, what we can share with you is what we are thinking about for the next several months and overall at this point. As you recall, back in February, we proposed the four action steps in the first phase. By way of quick review, those steps were developing guiding principles. We've done that. Brainstorming of possible development options, conducting a needs assessment and a site capacity analysis. We will have the second step, the brainstorming discussion in April at the April thirteen meeting with the benefit of the input from the survey I've mentioned. We also think that a needs assessment needs to be conducted. And in an effort to conserve our funds, we're looking at some aspects of the needs assessment being conducted in-house. However, we believe there are other aspects that will require some consultant to assist us. And we're proposing to have a couple more discussions with council before that study, that needs assessment study is launched later in the summer. We're also going to do some very basic site capacity analysis, hopefully within the next month or so as a basic information piece. And we'll probably need something more detailed when we are at the point of having an actual proposed type of project that we would want to pursue. So you'll hear a theme here, and that's us touching in with council frequently. I think a project of this magnitude requires us as administrators to ensure that what we are doing reflects the will of the council in that if any adjustments or fine tuning needs to be done along the way, that we hear from you and hear from you often. Before the needs assessment is launched, we would like to return to have at least two more of the sort of what we're calling grounding conversations with council, similar to the ones we've had. And we're, we're planning, we're teeing this up for both in the months of May and June to have those conversations. First, we are proposing that our administrative team develop a comparative facilities report with a high-level information about other projects within the range of options in which our council and the community have expressed interest. Presently, we're working to develop a list of twelve of these facilities in our region, maybe more, maybe less, but everything from the community centers, the ballfield complexes, to performing arts centers, and to boys and girls clubs. We would reach out to the owners and operators of these projects to learn things, basically, you know, like, how did you do it? How was the facility funded? How long did construction take? What was the public agency's role? What was their contribution? We'd like to know about how their facilities are operated, how they're maintained, how they're how they're financed, both in terms of the construction as well as operating budget going forward. What role, if any, did private entities have in these types of questions? And how do the operations pencil out? Is there some type of an ongoing public subsidy needed with regard to the facilities that they're operating in their communities? Once we get the answer to those questions, we're then proposing a panel discussion with city council involving some regional experts who have a wide range of experience in developing and operating the range of types of recreational and cultural facilities that we're currently talking about. That's what we're hoping to do in the month of June. And again, those discussions then would be followed up by development and presentation of the needs assessment. Our plan, and we believe is that we think it would then be appropriate to come back and work on refining city council's guiding principles again, to ensure with an abundance of caution that we're reflecting the will of council and how we proceed. We're currently slating that discussion to begin as early as September. We would then follow that with additional outreach to the community. Again, let's touch base with our stakeholders. At this point, I should note quickly that some informal type of input opportunities would continue after the March surveys completed. We don't want to just survey the community of stakeholders so often that they get tired of it and don't respond, but we are looking to have opportunities to continue to maintain dialogue with them. We have yet to build that out, but that's what we're envisioning. We will then have some discussions relating to budgetary inputs to consider in the fall in order to continue these discussions in the next year. Once the council community have narrowed in on a specific type of project, we would then bring these options for completing the design process back to council. And the questions that we would then be discussing is what additional site capacity analysis is needed? Does council want to do something open-ended? For example, like a design competition to see what a range of designers might bring us? Or possibly work from the start with a, a specific architect or landscape designer, whatever expertise is appropriate. We will be having these types of discussions later this year and could possibly launch as early as two thousand twenty-two. So I've said a lot, but I wanted to at least give you a sense of what's next, what are the details? You have the survey and then just give you that overarching view of what we're intending to do over the course of the remainder of this year and then hopefully beyond. Todd, do you have anything further that you would add to that?
Well, I think you covered pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go. Any questions? Councilmember Brials?
Yeah, hi, thank you very much. That was, that was really good to hear more about those, the plans and especially with those specifics. It sounds like the plan is a lot more filled in. One of the things that I know I and a number of other council members had expressed interest in was a site visit, essentially to see what's there. I know we had talked about some of the water situations there and I, to understand that better might help us in building out a vision, whatever we end up doing. And so just that in my mind and how it works with everything else that's naturally there and what kind of scale we may have to do with, in order to meet our code with whatever we end up putting there. I think it would help us to have that site visit. And I got my boots ready. Rain or shine. So let me know. I would be very interested in that and I, I suspect some others would too. Thank you.
I think Michael told us previously, we have a standing offer, so if you want to contact him and arrange a time to go out to site with him and Mike, they'd be glad to take you.
You bet.
Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, you mentioned reaching out to the public in terms of letting them know about the survey and doing that internally. What particular steps were you going to take to inform the, the public?
Well, as I mentioned, the, the first step is really the survey itself. In addition to asking for their input, it's informational.
That's what I mean, in terms of letting them know the survey exists.
Yeah, what we're looking at is primarily an in-house social media campaign to promote participation. We're really borrowing from the template that achieved tremendous success with the city's participation rate in the census as a part of the, the campaign template. And we're looking at other possible in-house opportunities that might have many of us from other departments doing outreach potentially by telephone to increase and maximize participation. It's also, I might add, a tremendous opportunity for, for you, Councilman Morgan, and your colleagues as elected officials to also reach out to your constituents, encouraging them also to participate in the survey. This is a really all-hands-on-deck approach and I think it's a quintessential function for our elected officials and an opportunity for them to also reach out directly to your voters.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Steckler, your not yellow hand is up.
I know. I don't know why I don't get a yellow hand. I guess it's, uh, I must have hit something funky on my computer at one time. First of all, Michael, I want to say this. I loved the vast majority of everything you just said. The amount of information that your team is going out to collect, I commend you, commend you, commend you. The fact that you're trying to go out and get as much information as possible and then go out and get some more information, then verify the information that you got. We're talking about a huge expenditure and I do not believe that we can do, be, be any less, uh, that's right, we're conscientious about trying to get as much input from the citizens as we can. So kudos to you on that. I really was really, really pleased with that. I had one other comment, but I do like what Councilmember Morgan stated. I hadn't even thought about this, but having done a number of these surveys in a short period of time, the most inexpensive and most effective way to get the word out, I hate to say it, but a very inexpensive postcard to our constituents, to the citizens of Mill Creek, can be dropped with a very low cost, one-color postcard. Here's your chance to be heard. Telling them about the survey and where to go to get on the survey could substantially increase the response rate of this and give a lot more people the chance to respond because much as we're not, you know, we're all over this, the people on this screen right now. There are so many people in the city that just aren't aware of it. And I do think it's a cost, but you'll find that it's pretty minimal if we keep it to a smaller size, one color, and that postage rate is extremely low to, to our registered voters. I mean, I think it would give them a chance to really get out, not a registered voters, our registered citizens, give them a chance to be aware of this and they, and, and really say, let's hear from you and, and get them involved. The information you had, I started taking notes and of course, started to fail immediately. It was so complex, what you were going through. I think we'll probably be back asking you to do the same thing all over again in a couple of months, forgetting where, what stage we're at and what you're doing. It would be really beneficial if you could give us or you, through your consultant that you hired, a, a, a very simple calendar of, of what's going on so that when we do get confused in the future and we go, what are we doing next? We look at that little calendar that you gave us and we don't have to have you do another dissertation like you just did because I, I think the steps are going to get confusing, but I think they're very good. One, one, one other comment. I'm a little bit confused. I just need clarity here. Going back to the original plan that Karen and you and Karen came to us with, it was like, uh, we were going to do a little bit of work on the council and then go out to the public and get feedback, do a little more work on the council and go back to the public, get feedback and a little more work. It sounds like this is a little bit different in that we have, all we have done so far has come up with the, what needs analysis, the criteria on how to evaluate. And now we're going out to the public. And I, I assume, are we asking them, I guess my point of clarity, are we asking them for their input on what type of facility they want to see, even though we haven't really had that discussion as a council yet?
Well, I, I'll defer to the mayor when I speak, but yeah, generally what we're doing is not talking about this project or that project. Do you want a ball field? Do you want, you know, it's, it's really talking and evaluating the community's level of support for the guiding principles that we have worked and already established. We overall, we start with questions relating to their relative levels of satisfaction with the following aspects of living and working or visiting in Mill Creek. Factors such as safety, local economy, parks, recreation opportunities, shopping, dining. It's really an open-ended survey titled, designed to just elicit where the community is at in terms of those factors. It's also intended to probe potential support for a very broad range of projects, everything from no development at all to community centers, ballfields, pretty much everything that's been already captured in conversation is, is listed in type of a format where they can respond to these various categories. And does intend to gather some basic geographic information about the respondents of the survey, determining where they live and if they are residents of our city or if they are regional stakeholders that are, for whatever reason, are not participating. We believe that would be important data. But we really are in that, what is portion of our work where we're waiting for the figures to still emerge and our greatest challenge right now is to work to not rush to that level of definition until we really are able to capture the the zeitgeist, if you will, of the community and its wishes. And of course, after that, you'd mentioned a little bit of work with council and then the survey and a little more with, no, after the survey, we're intending a lot of substantive work with council.
Okay, okay.
And it's really for the you and your colleagues as our elected officials to at least hear from your constituents, not in one-on-one calls through the survey itself and for us to do that, that magic thing at the policymaking level of synthesizing so that we could advance to the next stages of the work. And the, the more specific definitions of projects, I think right now could potentially get in the way of us this important foundational work.
I agree.
To my dad, it's a, an opportunity to help build common ground with all of the different ideas while building that, that foundational support. As I outlined, there'd be an opportunity to go back to those guiding principles that were formulated and to revise them or consider revision of them with regard to the new feedback and the work that was, is contemplated over the summer. The other real quick thing I would say is with regard to the calendar, we, we actually debated that internally and in perfect transparency, we're not yet that good to be able to say, here's the date of certain things happening because there's a lot of different balls in the air. What we'd like to do is be able to provide a range. And in that regard, your point is well-taken. As I mentioned, the fifteenth is our probable launch date and we're expecting to hold it open through the thirty-first. A couple of surprises that may change that fifteenth date. So if we're able to at least sketch out a, a calendar, consider it a back of a napkin and also hold us to increasing levels of definition as this moves down the road, that might be a, a good way for us all to proceed.
How about we agree you pencil out a calendar as best you can right now, knowing that it's probably going to adapt and grow as we go through the process. It's organic, understood? And I also understand now that the bait, the, the, the survey you're talking about is really more like a a benchmark or baseline to start the process from is what you're really trying to, sounds like what you're trying to establish right now, and that makes a lot more sense. My last question, in the spirit of transparency, I know for a fact that you cannot ask the council's guidance in creating this survey because if you did, you would never get it done. So they, that, that, that can't happen, but it would be great if the council could at least be, get a, a preview of the, of the survey before it goes out. So we're aware of it, understand it, knowing full well that we can't change it or guide you or tell you what to do. But I think in the spirit of transparency and whenever, whenever I'm doing a survey, what I'm really looking for is if there's something in there that's going to blow the whole thing up on me, I want to know about it before I do the survey rather than after I do the survey. So I would suggest, not even request, suggest that you, the council get a copy of it, just to get an idea of the questions and the flow of it so we're prepared. But we on this screen need to understand we can't come back and tell you how to craft this survey. That's not the job of the city council.
Yeah, your point's well-taken and we're already on the same page. I'm contemplating an information only so that it's distributed shortly before it hits in the community. Most importantly, because you don't want to be blindsided by constituents. Most importantly, because you don't want to be blindsided by constituents asking you questions about the survey, and you would need to be familiarized with it. So.
Yeah, we want to understand it. We just want to understand it. Send it in PDF format. We can't make a change. It's set. We just need to understand it.
Yeah, and your, your, your point is well taken. And we're headed in that direction.
Thank you. I've talked way too much already.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? Okay, hearing is seen none. We will move right along. We're now on to propose new initiatives, and Councilmember Steckler has something to bring up with the council.
I'm so sorry you have to hear me again. Okay, my fellow council members. Oh, Siri. I hope you didn't all hear that.
Yes, you're going to apologize to.
Yeah, Siri just apologized. There's no need for me to apologize. That was pretty, that was pretty funny. I was talking with the city manager about an idea, and we wanted to make sure the council is on board with it before we move ahead. But we would like to propose a new project, co-sponsoring project between the city of Mill Creek and the Kiwanis Club of Mill Creek. We tried this a couple years ago and it really well. COVID put the kibosh on it last year. But we'd like to rekindle an electronics recycling event here in Mill Creek. We would propose to do it on Sunday, May 2, which is the day after the infamous Mill Creek garage sale, when everybody tries to sell their electronic monitors and old TVs that won't sell, and then they don't know what to do with them. They can bring them right down to City Hall Norris Parking Lot. Electronics are extremely difficult to get rid of. I don't know if a lot of you know this. If you do try to take them to a recycling, to a local retailer, the average cost that they'll charge you is $30 to recycle the monitor, computer, or something like that. So it's very expensive. You can try and break it apart and shove it in your waste management container and hopefully don't get in trouble. But this is a way to help people to actually recycle their electronics, not just dispose, recycle them. So this would not be a disposal of electronics, but a recycling of electronics. We would propose that the majority of these things will be laptops, monitors, servers, printers. The reason I know about the $29 is I had to get rid of my old printer, and it cost me $29 to get it recycled, which I thought was ridiculous fee to have to pay for just to recycle a broken printer. But I didn't want to dump it in my dumpster. So this would be something that would give the citizens a chance for a free recycling. Kiwanis will provide all the labor for it. They may ask if you feel good about making a donation to Kiwanis, great, but it's not expected. It's like we do every other event, no, no charge if nobody wants to pay anything. We would run it from 10 to 2. I already talked with Matthew about, we were thinking about getting a big city dump truck, and our goal would be to fill that dump truck with electronics that normally would go into a landfill, but now will be 100% recycled. So it's a, it's a, it's a feel-good event, and it would be something to bring the citizens together. There's no cost to the city at all from the recycling center, from Kiwanis or anybody else. And, and like I said, Kiwanis would take care of it. The recycling center will also be responsible. Should people leave their hard drives in there, they are responsible for removing them, wiping them and destroying them. So there's that safety feature as well, although most people will probably pull their own hard drive and smash it with a hammer in their garage if, if they, you know, feel safe. Is there any questions from anybody about this? We just wanted to make sure before we moved ahead if there was any concern from anybody on the council.
John, two questions. So is the partnership, just to be clear, that the city would be hosting this on the city, at City Hall?
Correct. It's on city land. It's on a, the electronics are collected in a city truck. And the reason why we do that is the recycling center can't send a truck on Sunday. So we load it into the truck. We put the truck in the, in the garage overnight where it's nice and safe. The next day, we pull the truck out. The recycling center will come down on Monday. I'll be there to observe the actual handoff of the equipment into the recycling truck. But that's all that the city is doing. They're providing us with the land and the facility and that.
And some labor, Mayor, as it relates to the dumping or the transfer from the dump truck into the recycling.
Okay. John, my other question is, as a fellow alumnus of Troop 91, usually does their electronics recycling event the second weekend in May, out at Safeway and 132nd. Is there any opportunity here to partner with them as well in this, to possibly expand the scope?
Absolutely. I would, we would not be opposed to bringing them in. If, if that was of interest, if you have a connection with them.
Yeah, I can. With the new scoutmaster, so offline, I can do that.
Offline, let's, let's, let's just make this, the whole idea is that we give the citizens of Mill Creek and the surrounding area a chance to recycle those electronics.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, objections?
Mayor, can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, my camera just did something crazy, so I'm going to log out soon and log back in. But I guess my only question for Councilwoman Steckler was, haven't we, we, we have done this in the past. So were we technically partnering, agreeing to a partnership in the past when we have done this event for everyone? Because this isn't the first time we've done it.
Yes, two years ago, we did it for the first time in a partnership between the city of Mill Creek and the Kiwanis Club of Mill Creek. And it was very successful. We filled the trailer full of electronics. Just last year during COVID, we could not do it. We couldn't get enough people there to help out. I think you weren't allowed to have more than two people together, or something like that. I can't remember what it was, but we couldn't do it last year.
Yeah, I think it was really popular.
It was. It was very popular.
It's uncomfortable to everybody else's.
I'm comfortable. And any objections, anyone? I do not see or hear any.
City manager, we'll move ahead on it then. And Mayor, you can get touch me about the Boy Scouts. That would be lovely to have Boy Scouts involved.
They'll do that. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and hopefully by the time I get done reading, Mayor Portem will be back on the call. So we have item F, approval of checks numbers 63124 through 63154, and ACH wire transfers in the amount of $45,239.06. The audit committee was myself and Councilmember Morgan. I had no exceptions. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
Item G, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of $196,329.12. I had no exceptions.
No exceptions, Mayor.
And item H, city council meeting minutes of March 2, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Did Stephanie vote? Sounds like Stephanie was not up back on the call, so the motion was approved 6-0. Okay, on to report. I have several items I want to praise the council of. First is a reminder that the Mayor Portem and I will be having our coffee talk next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM virtually. So please let Naomi know if you think you may participate, so that we can, if need be, post a notice of potential quorum prior to the meeting. Second is a request from Michael. Last fall sometime, we had an update, maybe it was later in November, December, we had an update on the legal fees issue. We're almost a quarter of the way into the year. I think it'd be good in the next month or so to get another update, just to see where we stand and how we're doing on those legal fees and reining those in. So make a request if we could have that on an agenda sometime in April. Third thing is, in terms of Olympia, two of the bills I brought up a couple months ago related to the GMA, House Bill 1117, which is the bill that would add the, amend the GMA to add the planning goal and the provisions dealing with salmon recovery. That's the bill that has the provision in, for local jurisdictions to adopt CFPs to deal with the culverts. That has passed the House and is now pending in the Senate. I don't know where it's going to go, but it did get passed the House. And I believe the House Bill 1089 also passed. That's the other GMA bill that would add the climate change goals and policies. So if one or both of those get enacted by the Senate and ultimately approved by, and enacted, we will have a busy comp planted update next time around. And I can't remember if that's 2022 or 2023, but it's coming up sometime in the next year or two. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is, the governor's office reached out to the mayor's and county executive late last week to host their, a listening tour. So they held a 45-minute call on Monday afternoon just to get input from the mayor's and the exec's office. And there is also Gary Clark, the, from the Economic Alliance on the call, just to get input as to what's going on with COVID. I think the thing they heard most loud and clear is we've got to get the businesses back up and running, and we've got to simplify whatever the next phase is, so that there's not all these distinctions between 25% here and 10% there. It needs to be uniformed, so it's easy to understand. The Snoomish County has communicated, as I think other counties have as well, that they don't like the region approach. For our region, we're getting drugged down right now by Pierce County. The good news, I guess, is that there's a lot of objections to it. The bad news is the governor's response is they're not going to a county-by-county basis. If they go off the region basis, it's going to be to just one size fits all for the state, which wouldn't help us either. With that said, they are actively working on Phase 3. Phase 3 would be 50% capacity for most businesses. We did not get into timing, or they did not discuss timing of when we might be anticipating moving to Phase 3, but they are actively working on that. So hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later. And then finally, the issues I was just, that I had heard from the council and that we've been hearing was access for businesses, getting open so we can get our passport business back open, concerns about how we comply with the OPM when we're able to have public meetings again, and how we deal with those requirements when we're going to have people in person and some people virtually. And then finally, the issue of the access and information to seniors on how to get vaccinated. So, but there was a good meeting. It was just listening, but it was helpful that they actually reached out, and we had good participation. I think everyone but the mayors of Bothell and Woodway were on the call. So it was good that they're being proactive and reaching out to the local jurisdictions. So that's what I had. Mayor Portem is back on. Do you have a report tonight?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I missed the beginning of your report. So I'm assuming that you did mention that our coffee chat is going to be next week. Perfect. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that I met with the Youth Advisory Board last week, and I kind of want to give all my fellow council members a heads up, because they had some awesome fun ideas. They want to learn more about city council. And they asked me if I thought that some of you would be willing to let them interview you, to ask you questions about what we do. And I told them yes. And they also asked if we might be interested in doing a town hall this year, where they ask us lots of questions. And I also told them that there are five of us up for election, and I bet someone would take them up on that. So this is your heads up, that the ask may be coming from them. They're really smart and have a law on the ball, and they're really wanting to learn about what we do on city council. Also, Michael, I know we discussed at our budget a little bit about hiring an HR person on a contract basis. I think it was not a full-time person. And I was hoping that perhaps in our next meeting, you could give us an update on how that's going. And finally, I would like to take a moment tonight, because yesterday was International Women's Day. So this year's theme was women in leadership achieving an equal future in a COVID-19 world. And I wanted to take a moment tonight and honor all the women of Mill Creek who, who are on the front lines in COVID-19, as well as all the women who are out there doing the work every day in our community. The COVID-19 has showed us that many of the women, many of the caregivers, the healthcare workers, the teachers that are on the front lines are disproportionately women, and I want to honor them tonight. And so I just want to honor all the women in our community for all that they do for us. This is a day that has been set aside to reflect on the progress that we have made and acknowledge that there's still work to do, and no country has achieved equity thus far. And so I want to honor all the women for International Women's Day and let them know that we appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilmember Bond, any report this evening?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Steckler, any report? Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, as of 5:00 PM today, the auditor's office reported that the recall effort against Sheriff Adam Fortney has failed. I say that for several reasons. I believe the citizens are the benefactor at this failure, and it failed rather miserably, thankfully. In this kind of vitriolic tone that we live in, where we don't agree with somebody, that we must cancel them or recall them and do all these other things. I think this is a positive step forward for the community, that the bullies can be beaten. Thank you.
Councilmember Brier, is any report tonight?
No report.
Councilmember Morgan?
No report as well, Mayor. Thank you.
I will turn it over now to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Before I begin with some of my planned remarks, I'll just real quickly reply to Mayor Portem big note that we do have our HR firm on board. We are deliberately throttling the opening, working behind the scenes administratively to build out the administrative architecture, if you will. Our first kickoff meeting was this afternoon, actually. We are going to be introducing this consultant to our department heads at tomorrow's meeting. It's an introductory meeting, and then we ultimately are going to be developing the infrastructure further administratively, and then announcing and introducing and having a citywide all-employee meeting with this new team. Again, we believe it's a cost-effective business model. It is a six-month contract. We are looking forward to evaluating the data. I will tell you that in just the meetings I've had, including the introductory kickoff meeting today, I think we're headed in a direction that could possibly rewrite what HR better practices or best practices looks like for a small community with less than 60 employees. I think our goal ultimately is to be able to scale it financially, so that we're not overspending, but we're not in any way going to be cutting corners. And there are a number of best practices that we have already identified as important to us. And this firm has already brought some really current, up-to-date information that they serve a number of different clients. It's a team with a deep bench. They are specialists, not unlike an engineering firm that has a bunch of different specialties within it, so that with these hyper-specializations, we don't have to pay for that type of talent in-house. We can just go out to the market and embrace this private model to help us with the management. So we'll have more information in the next council meeting, and we'll be able to share more details. My goal, though, is to be able to, after we meet with the department heads, our management team tomorrow, I was going to share a little bit more of an information with our community of employees and the city council, with the goal of having a little more of an explicit conversation as soon as the firm is available. So thank you for that inquiry.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very exciting. And again, it's not as if suddenly the vaccines come and the healing begins and everything is back to normal. We're looking at a very long runway financially, and we are gearing up for it. In fact, we're looking at additional ways within which we can reorganize, and will certainly, in consultation with our legal advisors, be working with this HR team for our next round of reorganization. So moving along, though, I did want to talk a little bit about what we have been planning as administrators. um, moving along, though, I did want to uh talk a little bit about uh what we have been planning as administrators uh with regard to uh the events related to Extravaganza, our Community Service Day, uh Memorial Day, and some other developments. Everything I am uh about to introduce is with an eye towards continuing to comply with COVID nineteen while also maintaining some semblance of momentum in terms of community relationship building and the projects. Uh, for example, Extravaganza, um, it is set for Saturday, April third, from ten AM to twelve PM. We are following a format similar to what we did for Halloween, except that we're not going to be doing it in the parking lot of City Hall North with all the congestion that that created. Uh, we're going to be um having this event over at Heatherwood Middle School where vehicles uh will drive past and collect. It's not going to be uh running around, uh, you know, going looking for the eggs in the field, not yet. Um, I want to say that the candy has been donated by Central Market, and Kristen Rasmussen is working with the Youth Advisory Board um to pre-stuff the eggs uh with Hershey kisses placed in Ziploc bags and the gloves on and all the rules that we're all required to to follow. Um, our Chris, Kristen is going to reach out to other nonprofit groups um for additional volunteer support on the day of the event. We'll be, of course, also working with Chief Young and his team uh to develop a a traffic plan uh with the guidance from the police department. Um, the other thing I will mention, um, only because it's not on here, but we are also tracking what may necessarily be a request from council for a second support of the Jackson High School commencement parade. Uh, Councilman Steckler called earlier today and asking what the planning looked like. It's contingency planning right now. Um, assuming that the schools are open and can conduct their own commencement. Um, we would expect them to manage their own affairs. However, um, there are at least some indications that that may or possibly may not occur. If it does not occur, um, I'm just going to predict that it's going to be council's wish um that uh we follow uh the support we offered last year. If that's not the case, um, we would like to have that conversation sooner than later. Our goal is always to reflect the will of our our council in how we proceed going forward. So I wanted to interject that at this point.
Michael, could I make a a quick comment on that?
It's up to the mayor. I have no objection, though.
Oh, is that okay? I I just wanted to reiterate to everyone that, yeah, we 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 may, the kids may go back to school. Who knows? May not. The important thing is they haven't been at school all year, these seniors. So they're not experiencing that connection. And I I think everyone here that was here, everyone was here last year, except for you, Jeff. You know, this is a new one for you. And of course, all the responsibility falls on you. Um, that parade was a huge win to those kids and their families. It was a great event. Uh, it took a lot of pre-planning, and we 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 did a lot of it at the last minute last year. Um, because we kind of wanted to wait and see, wait and see, wait and see. If we get on it a little bit earlier, like now, this month in March, and got the approval of of council, not asking for it right now, but got the go ahead. Um, it would put a lot less pressure on people like the chief getting the traffic uh 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 control for the fire department, getting the fire truck down there, uh, all of the issues that went into putting this parade together. But gosh, everybody, it meant so much to not just our kids and our schools. But don't forget, we had college students that came through. I have a college senior who will not be walking this year at the UW. Anything I could do to at least get him some recognition for getting himself through college and all those other college students, as well as the high school uh seniors. COVID uh is a little bit destructive on on a very important stage of many people's lives. I think this is something we could do to really give back and rally our community. And I'm sorry to jump on on the soapbox with you, Mike, uh, Michael, but I know you and I already talked about this earlier. If we could get going on this sooner than later, we can do it, do it right, and it won't be a huge pain of trying to do it in a very short period of time.
As the only one, I think, with a graduating senior this year from Jackson, I would wholeheartedly support this.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, you do have a kid. Okay, that's right. And I used to uh Jackson. But anyway, just would really reinforce that if we could get this.
It was a lot of fun last time, too.
Uh, the whole town turned out for it, up and down the streets everywhere. Gave us a chance to cheer for something. Um, and those poor kids got a got a raw deal, and they'll never get their senior year of high school back. They'll never get their senior year of college back. You just got to move on. You got to make the best of it. But sure be nice if we could recognize them. Enough said.
Okay, with the permission of the chair, I'll continue. Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, the the next matter relates to our planning for Memorial Day. Um, while we firmly expect that we will not be in the same situation we were last year for a reverse parade format, our goal and our planning right now contemplates a some type of semblance of what we had with all the appropriate COVID guidelines being followed. Um, we are working with a retired high ranking member of the Navy uh who is a a city resident, and name many of you may remember, uh, Mr. Mike Kidd, um, who is uh working with me really uh to formulate a more uh an affordable plan going forward. I recall that we had a consultant uh paid over twenty thousand dollars a year uh for two events. Um, Mr. Kidd and I are talking about possibly developing a partnership with the Everett Navy League. Um, and basically putting together a real impressive team of volunteers. And we're looking for possible partnership opportunities within the city with other alliances within the community uh that can really uh give us the momentum builder for the memorial event uh with the goal being then that uh we would be fully open uh back to normal and that we would have a Veterans Day event uh that um is something that the community has been accustomed to in the past. So if we're looking at uh CDC guidelines and a whole bunch of data, it it's just the tea leaves are telling us that we will be able to do something other than a reverse parade. And the the fortuitous timing and the sequencing of this is that while the Memorial Day is a memorial and it's 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 less celebratory, it's also more manageable and will give us a chance to um work out the kinks with uh this new relationship uh hopefully with the Navy League. Um, it is not yet uh ready for a primetime announcement that it's been baked and it's ready to go, but I wanted you to know that we're working on it, and we hopefully will have some other possible really exciting announcements uh relating to the alliances that we're creating with other stakeholders in our community. Uh, the bottom line here is the Navy League has done this in other places and has really developed relationships uh with uh other community groups. And we're looking to replicate that model here. And I really need to give Mike Kidd the the credit for this idea. And uh, we've already had uh meetings with our administrative teams uh to talk about this. So more on that. Secondly, uh, real quickly, uh, we're, we've reached out uh to all of our contacts that we know historically at the USS Ralph Johnson and follow up to the idea of welcoming them back from their voyage, uh, their their last mission, uh, that they were gone for a number of months, I believe. Again, this relationship that uh we have developed with uh Mike Kidd, uh, former high ranking member of the Navy. Yeah, we're going to work with him to get the current commander, master chief uh contacted. Uh, we've not yet received responses from all the contacts we've reached out to. We're also informed that the command staff within the Navy rotates every eighteen months to two years. So some of our contacts uh may indeed be obsolete. Uh, the other, and I'm kind of apologize for jumping around chronologically, uh, is talking about um the date of Saturday, April twenty fourth, um, from ten AM to noon is being the Mill Creek Community Service Day. Um, we are uh working to solicit volunteer ideas from the community, the groups, individuals and families, um, all of whom are welcome to participate. Uh, this Community Service Day will also be following the COVID guidelines with uh the group sizes and social distancing uh that were mandated to follow. So uh, we wanted you to know that that's also in process right now. Um, very quickly, uh, with regard to the Park and Recreation Board update. Um, as we know from our last council meeting, uh, our Public Works Supervisor Matthew Combs joined the Park and Rec Board meeting on May sixth to provide an update on the Park Access Point signage project that the board had been working on. Matthew is currently finalizing locations for the new and updated signs to be placed. Um, we are working uh within the triage of projects uh that the Public Works uh crews are have on their uh calendar for the season. And our goal right now is to install and complete the project uh by the fall of this year, a fall of twenty twenty one. Uh, the approximate cost uh that we have specked out thus far for the signage is around seventeen hundred dollars, which our finance director informs us of Laurel Genzo, that it is within um our budget for our public work. Uh, the next real quick item related to the Art and Beautification Board update. Um, during the February meeting, uh, the board members adding a plaque next to the historic preservation panels, uh, the five panels that have already been installed on the Main Street Bridge. The board in reviewed and approved the wording on a plaque and agreed on selecting a uh a horizontal bronze plaque. Additionally, um, I'm informed that they discussed holding uh some type of an informal ribbon cutting ceremony for the board members. Yeah, and invite local media. Um, I had a discussion with Kristen about that and a quick conversation with Councilman Steckler uh that my my experience in this area is that um if any event like this happens, that with first and foremost, we talk to our city council and make sure that whatever whatever is planned for ribbon cutting or so forth is done with the complete uh approval and support of our policymakers and the legislative board. So um, I just want to be transparent with what I've heard and want to make certain that whatever we do is reflecting uh the will of the city council. But I understand that the wording for the plaque is going to celebrate the history of Mill Creek and learn how our community has grown from woodlands to the beautiful city of Mill Creek. And that this also on the plaque will be the language that this project was made possible thanks to the Snoomish County Historic Preservation Commission and the Mill Creek's Art and Beautification Board members of twenty eighteen to through twenty twenty. I believe that that's the proposed language for the plaque, and they're specing out the cost at roughly about seven hundred dollars, which will come out of the Arts and Beautification Board budget. And our, of course, our public works team will be able to bolt the plaque to the aluminum frame that currently uh supports the five historic panels. So with that, um, my report has concluded. I thank you for your patience. It was a lengthy one tonight. Uh, with the council's permission and Mayor Holt's, I'd like to turn the floor over to Director Mike Todd to talk about our GIS, geographical information systems approach. And then to talk about uh the postmortem, if you will, on our snow response report.
Yeah, be before Mike takes over, I think uh John had a comment.
I I just wanted to follow up on the the city manager's uh comments about the Arts and Beautification Board. This historic preservation project is is an unusual one. It's it's taken three years, actually, to complete. It's uh gone through a number of different board members on the Arts and Beautification Board. Uh, and it is finally now at the point of completion, and it's ready for the ribbon cutting. And a request, just a request has come out that given this particular project, it's an opportunity. Typically, when we do a ribbon cutting, we invite the council down and the council, you know, cuts the ribbon, and it's a great photo opportunity. Uh, that uh the 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 request has been from the council that, uh, from the board, that maybe what we do instead is celebrate the 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 board members of the Arts and Beautification Team, the citizens, not the the council or the council liaison or anything like that, just those citizens that that uh and and that includes, you know, there's citizens that are that were on that board. They're no longer even citizens in Mill Creek that were a part of this project, but let them cut the ribbon, let them be the the celebratory uh focus of uh what happened. Because to be honest with you, it it was, it was that little group of people that kept pushing through all that data and all that information and had to get everything verified. And so it's an opportunity to actually celebrate our citizens of one of our boards, but it's a little unusual. So it's something that we wanted to, uh, you know, in respect to the council, maybe bring to the council's attention and 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 let the council, you know, give us some feedback if they're okay with that, or uh if they're if they're if they're not okay with that. Um, we we just uh, I I I'm asking if 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 that's all right, if that's what we do.
And John, just to be clear, that request came from the committee.
The board, yeah.
The board, right. You know, I'm speaking for myself. I'm all in favor of my role. And I mean, they spent years, as you said, working on this project. My role was saying hi to the the funding. So I can't say I had a huge involvement in it. I think they should get the recognition for the work they put into it, but that's just my two cents.
And I know a lot of us work with other boards of citizens uh that uh do donate their time as well. And we, you know, it's really great to recu- uh recognize a citizen run board and 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 all that they do, because I don't know, a lot of people know about all these boards that we have and the citizens that donate that time. It's a great opportunity to really celebrate them. I see Councilmember Morgan gave me a thumbs up. So um I think, uh, why don't we, why don't we let the request go for now and 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 uh, if there's any concerns or anyone, people can direct those at a later date offline. But uh, that was what the request was. The suggestion was suggestion. I guess it should be called a suggestion, not a request. Um, because they're 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 not against having council there, it's just a suggestion. But anyway, leave it with that. And um, I'm sorry, well, let's move on with with Director Todd, but I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit for everybody.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Um, I just want to say, if we are going to start, if we are going to deem that it's okay COVID wise to start having a group of people together for ribbon cutting and press, um, I absolutely want them to get credit um for their work and for this, but I also want the board members who did the work um for getting um Heron Park um accomplished to get credit, too, because we we have put off doing a public a a real public event for that due to COVID. So I want, I don't want them to be left out on their recognition for their work and their grand opening. So.
You mean that whatever is done for this would be COVID compliant with whatever whatever is in effect at the time we do it, and we still have on the to do list a once COVID allows to do something for Heron Park, too. So I agree that in both instances, we should do that. Okay. Hearing or seeing no further comments, uh, Director Todd, please take it away.
Thank you. We'll try it again. Are people seeing the entire screen or my other screen?
The entire screen.
Oh, excellent. Uh, the, so we are, you will notice tonight that both Matthew and I found the official Mill Creek version of the PowerPoint slide, so enjoy that. Uh, but big brother is behind us. This has got some funny things in it, so we'll see how well this works. So I appreciate your your indulgence. So jumping right into this, Mayor, Mayor Protem Council, what we want to do is give you kind of an update. You've heard us talk, third, heard staff talk over the years about GIS and how important it was to do something. We've always been kind of stuck with, we have to hire a GIS expert, have to hire a GIS expert. We couldn't afford that. We thought it was important. So what I would want to talk about tonight is an approach we found where we're going to go through a consortium with AWC. I'll talk about that at the end. An economic way for us to get started and build what I think is a very important way for us to organize our data and organize our work. So real basically, what is a GI, a geographical information system? Well, if you think about a city, the majority of the things that Matthew and I deal with every day has to do with the infrastructure, and that is spatially spread out around our city. Both its publicly owned things like streets and sidewalks and benches and stormwater uh facilities, but it's also the development that goes on, your homes, the businesses, uh, buildings that happen for institutions as well. What we really need is complete information about it all those assets that are out there in our system. And ideally, the past approach ideally worked out pretty well. We had somebody who was really good at creating maps, lots of symbols, lots of references. We have some phenomenal maps on our website. And along with those, we had files of information that matched those references on those maps. And ideally, that works great. But what happens is more, as you add more and more features, those maps, they get cluttered. We have lots and lots of map variations. I'll show you some examples here in a minute. There's just so much data that you can't put it on a paper map. It turns out that behind the behind the scenes, the files of data that go with those are named in a creative fashion. I've found, and what I, one of the things I got introduced to when my first days and, you know, on staff here just a few months ago was the G drive, infamous G drive. Everything is started on the G drive. We are electronic. Well, Was the G drive, infamous G drive. Everything is started on the G drive. We are electronic. Well, it's electronically filed on the G drive. But the organization is not what you would really hope. And so we spent a lot of time hunting for stuff. And if you start looking at the office, look at the organization, particularly for the public works data that we're looking, that we're trying to work with. It's organized by the authors or the occasion. It might be by the functional areas from a planning. Organization or from surface water or from the the public works engineering department. It could be by the project name. Is that the Heron Park upgrade or the original Heron Park? Park development, the project year, we talked about the twenty twenty grade C stormwater pipe failures. That's filed a different place than the than the grade C failures for twenty twenty one. So you have to kind of know what year it happened sometimes. That's not easy. Sometimes it's actually filed by who was working on it. Somebody had a good idea where to put it, but that person may have gone on to somewhere else now. Or the funding approach, the things that are on the CIP are in one place and the things that are not on the CIP are another place. It took me some time to figure that out. And I used a word down there called metadata. Metadata is data about data. Very little of these files have metadata other than what was in. The person who originally created them or originally filed them. It was in their head, but we don't really know what this document is about or what it should be linked to. So we do a lot of guessing and searching. You guess a search term, you set off the search engine, you cross your fingers. And sometimes you find it, sometimes you don't. Time has marched on around our city. We've gone from a very small, young city where everybody knew everything because we were a tiny little community. But our community has grown and the requirements on us, particularly for things like our NBDES. Permit through the Department of Ecology, those requirements have increased. And so we have a need for handling our data in a better fashion. Institutional knowledge and people's memories fade over time. We are thirty something years old now. We don't have people who are here when they first founded things. But some of those buildings and structures are important to know about. So knowledge is lost or not passed along. There's just only so much we can each hold in our heads or what we can pass along on notes to the to our successors. That searching for information is time consuming, as I mentioned earlier, spend a lot of time doing that. It's just not productive. And remarkably, there's some work that I believe may get done twice. And that's a shame. We're wasting taxpayer dollars and our time. We've got to find a better way. So here's some examples. I've got this one. This is a stormwater map. It shows the pipes. And if you look, I know it's tiny here, but. There's an eight inch pipe and there's a twelve inch pipe and it goes to eight inch pipe. And so you can see this particular version of the map has got pipe sizes. That's very useful for some things. There's another map. Similar for stormwater, but this one's got the catch basins numbered. So when Matthew and I go out in the field, there's a blockage somewhere. We're wondering if it's the pipe or the catch basin. We've got two different maps to flip it back and forth between to say, okay, what's the problem or what's the data behind that? This one shows out, another one of our stormwater assets or ponds. And so one of the things we have to do under our NPDES permit. Is inspect those ponds and vaults annually, keep track of what's going on, make changes, make improvements, make maintain those devices, but mainly keep records. So let's dive into that pond. So what do we do in the past? Well, here is whoops. Here's where some of those are stored, some of our electronic, but this is a notebook that I luckily found. It's the inspections from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, a very valuable book. Inside, here's a written form. One of the employees went out and took the information down. You can see there's a lot of scratch outs and things that are not applicable. Kind of deal, but that was the way we were collecting data. But you can see that's just raw data and for me to drill into that and find out the history for that catch basin is. Again, this is the report for eighteen and nineteen. Well, what happened in seventeen or sixteen? Those are filed different places. So it is frustrating and confusing because we've got data filed by year or by project, not by a particular asset. Here's another bit of thing we've done over the years. We spent lots of money. Doing CCTV, closed circuit television of our pipes. Here's one of our vendors in a vac or innovative vac, yeah, in a vac. We paid them to go out and look at the pipes. Here they've gone from manhole eight to nine. They've run the camera through for a hundred eighty feet. They made notes of here's where the water level was. Here's a break in. Here's a, there's another water level. So there's a sag in a pipe. Here's where a stain from something happened. All good information about what was going on with those pipes. And for our infamous pipes that are failing as they age and age over time. So what do we do with that data? We took the data from this. Vendor and we put it in this useful location in my top desk drawer. I found that when I moved in. This is probably half a million dollars worth of data on that net on that disk drive. It's kind of scary. Luckily, we've got two copies. We take good care of it. But that is the money we've spent over the year, a hundred thousand bucks a time to collect a lot of data. So those videos are there. So what do we do with those? Well, back in twenty sixteen, one of our stormwater tech, our stormwater technician at the time went through and you can see. Neighborhood names there, cottonwood, fairway, Heatherstone, went through and said a fifteen inch corrugated metal pipe. There's a hole, a tear at this joint. What should we do? We should fix that with a cured and placed pipe. So decisions were made. To think about how we repair those pipes. So somebody went to a lot of work to look at those videos. I heard, I hear stories of that particular individual having to take Dramamine. Because watching those videos was difficult, but she found that at this particular location, this thing happened and we should do this about it. Great. That was twenty sixteen. Well, guess what? Twenty eighteen, we went out and hired Priti to do very similar stuff, more detail, much better quality work. But that is the fundamental basis of our stormwater pipe repair program. And I'm not convinced we didn't start from scratch. They viewed those videos. They took that same data, made their own spreadsheet. I am just appalled that we've spent time doing that twice. The result from that is what we're all familiar with, the F grade falls. This is remember the one of the slides we saw as a council. Couple of years ago, the commissars, it was important to work on these big pipes with a ruptured wall and intrusion. You can see here in these videos. How badly that was. This particular hunk of pipe, fifty six thousand dollars. So this is not inconsequential data. It's important data and it helps us decide to spend a bunch of money to keep our stormwater system. In place. So the data is important and organizing data is important. So what is a GIS system? It's an information, a way to organize, organize the information, excuse me, around objects at locations. So think of layers of data that are organized into a visual map. And at each of those objects, those at their attributes associated with those objects. And so the kinds of things we'd like to know maybe would be when something was built. When an asset was built and maybe it has a link to the drawings for when it was built. Last time we inspected it with a link to the photos from that inspection. When it was serviced, who did it? What'd they do? How'd they do it? What did it cost? It may even go, we so maybe we get to a point where we can do some maintenance cycle asset life. So you can say, okay, it was in this condition this year. Was in this condition, such and such condition. Two years before that, we predict that next year we're going to have to work on that. So there's lots of things we can do. Once we get the data organized around the assets and those objects. So here we will try this. If I lose us, I will apologize, but I'm going to show you an example of an of a GIS system. If I can pull, I think I stopped sharing this screen. And I'm going to pull up a different screen. I'm going to show you Edmonds has kind of been a leader in this area. They are ahead of everyone else, but this is the kind of thing we can dream about doing. And having ourselves. So now difficulty there. Sharing screen again. I think this is the one. Cross your fingers. There. Okay. Are we seeing the city of Edmonds? Oops, right there. It's not working. Okay, I give up. This is an example. Let me just should point out some features, what you do in their system. You can zoom in to the map. What I've, what I've highlighted here is green is their stormwater pipes, brown is their sewer pipes. You can put different layers on there to see what's going on. And for instance, if I clicked on one of these assets, this is an address for somebody in their live system. If I were to click on that, it brings information up information about that. And there, in their case, it brings up the permit for when that was built. It brings up an inspection report for when they had their furnace replaced. It brings up a link to other assets that are going on. So the point is. A system like this, we can look at different systems, the way they interact and collect all that data, data that is going to be spread various places within our organization. But allows us to access that appropriately. So GIS is a better way. And the way we want to go at it is the thing called AWC GIS Consortium. So the Association of Washington City has got together with a company called Flow Analytics. Back in two thousand fifteen and they launched this and I heard about it as a council member at this, the annual conference in two thousand fifteen. It's a, it's a partnership. It's under the AWC Member Services umbrella. So it's quite easy for us to sign up for this. And it really is a way to access consulting and contract work with Flow Analytics and their expertise is GIS focused on the city's needs. Mill Creek, it turns out, was one of the first cities used to prototype and launch the service back in twenty fifteen. They were looking for cities to volunteer. And be the guinea pigs for them to come and interview staff and look at what we had, look at our maps, look at our data and say, here's an idea of how you might do this. For various reasons, city did not take them up on that. But it turns out, if you look back at that document from twenty fifteen, that strategy and that approach is still remarkably valid. So we've gone to the consortium. It is an annual membership. You choose a love, a tier of services. They have four tiers. We're going to choose the top tier is twenty six thousand dollars. And that buys us two hundred hours of the GIS expertise. That specialist will develop our system architecture. They're going to set loose their tools. They're going to search through our entire file system, no matter where it is, no matter how it's filed. They're going to find anything that looks like a map file in AutoCAD or an existing GIS file that we're going to have some from one of our vendors. And they're going to move that around and organize it for us. They'll also provide links to the data from the the county and the partners. Our our county has a fantastic GIS system. Many of you played with it for various features and functions. We use it all the time for the assessors debt data, and that's how we find about properties and property ownership and various things like that. So we'll have a live link, live link to that data. We've also had the PUD have said, wouldn't you like to have our GIS data so you can use our. Poll numbers when you talk to us about that street light that's out. And we've had to say, thanks, but no, thanks. We don't have a way to read those files. So that will be something we'll link into it. The the specialists will also set us up with user interfaces and they'll train our staff. And really, it is feasible within the two hundred hours to get to that point. I talked to a couple of other cities, the city of Shelton down by Olympia. Is a much older city, so their data fundamentally is not, is in good a shape as ours is. But they went through the same process of actually digitizing old drawings and computer files. And having the the consortium expertise to put this together and they've got essentially what we're trying to do for the same level of service. I'm convinced that's where it is very successful with this. Future years, we would probably sign up for a lower tier level. We would sign up for more of a maintenance level. So again, we didn't have to hire a full time employee. If we can keep our appetite narrow, we would probably sign up for a level one or level two and it's proportional. So the tens of five or ten thousand dollars. We may get greedy though, or may get interested in other applications. There's always more things you could do. So that will be a decision we'll make in the future, but right now we're just signing up for the base level, get the base system set up. Other costs associated with it, we already have our GIS software. We have two seats for that. We don't use them very well. But collectively, by the time we add enough seats for other people to access the data, including our public works, maintenance people, it's about three or four thousand bucks a year. We may pay for certain data sets. If you want to get aerial photos down to three inch resolution to be able to look at. Exactly where a pipe is, exactly where manhole cover is, we could do that, cost a couple thousand bucks. We're not going to do that to start with. And we'll spend some time for staff training. But really think about this. I've got openings for some project engineers and a city engineer. We're going to hire with an eye to familiarity with GIS tools. It is not unheard of and not inappropriate to have to to expect that out of somebody. Just like we expect somebody to know Microsoft Word and Excel and PowerPoint when we hire them. We'll be hiring somebody who has some familiarity with GIS tools. So again, we don't need that expertise to use it. We use the. The consortium judiciously to provide the the new applications for us. Companion software applications will be in our future. There's opportunities to to put work order tracking in there. Track our sweeper and know where the sweeper went, plow, and Matthew will talk about it. Track our plow and know where our where our plow went and how long it took and those kinds of things. So those kinds of applications. There's lots of vendors would love to sell us something. We are very fundamentally sticking with the basics. We want to build the foundation first. And then add tools on top of it, not buy the tools and have to backfit it. Our evolution or initial focus has been a surface of water assets that twenty six thousand dollars will be charged against our stormwater budget. And thankfully, we have a a grant that runs out at the end of this month for us to spend money. We have a fifty thousand dollar grant. We can switch this will be charged. And so we've got some grant money for stormwater capacity that will help that out. We will collect and connect the data that we have. We will start working on field data collection for maintenance and reporting, particularly with respect to our stormwater assets. We are behind, as we heard back last September, we're behind and out of compliance with the Department of Ecology. We need to collect a lot of data on our assets. So we'll be doing that. But as I said, this is going to be a future tool, the platform for future tools like we talked about. And fundamentally, I'm looking forward to getting some that symmetric for process improvement. So we are not doing the same thing twice and we're doing it smarter, working smarter than rather than faster. Different data layers. It goes beyond just the stormwater stuff, road networks, pavement condition reports, historical data about pavement repairs and maintenance that goes along with that. Sidewalks, ADA ramps, sign inventory, streetlights, link to the streetlights that are owned by the PUD, link to the P, to the circle, to the. Water districts, pipes, zoning, land use, private development data, permit data, as-built drawings, lots of different things. That are presently hard to find. All of these physical assets make up the infrastructure of our city. Here's one more example to make it real. There's a sinkhole out. This is at Nickel Creek Park is right here. This is a little cut out. We've combed this off. We've scratched our heads and gone, what's going on? There's a sinkhole. You'll look down in there and it's four or five inches before you see the dirt and the gravel underneath it. Well, if you notice, that is in a patched area. There was a pavement patch done sometime. I don't know. I don't have the institutional knowledge. Matthew doesn't. We've tried looking at the files. Was that patch done in the twenty eighteen citywide? Payment rest, pavement patching program or the twenty nineteen or the twenty seventeen or the twenty sixteen? We can't find it. I'm leery to dig that hole until we know what's going on underneath there. Is this just some settling or is there a bigger problem? So this is a graphic example of if we knew what had gone on in this location. By location, not what year it was done or how it was paid for with the CIP money or non-CIP money. We could drill right down and find if this was repaired and here's why they did that. And we would have some confidence before we dig this open. And maybe maybe find trouble or maybe find just a place to dump a couple of wheelbarrows of gravel and pavement ore. With that, we are anxious to get this started immediately. The vendor is ready to go. We are ready to go. We just need to send them a check. And our base system will be up and ready to use in three or four months. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Decler.
Mike, great presentation. Actually, very, very, very good. Thank you. Question I had, I don't know if this is really viable or not, but with this much data. Is there any way that the this investment and and this this the data we're collecting? Can automate some manual services for us and in turn save some money for the city?
I don't know about automating manual services, but for instance, let me use the example of the street sweepers. We don't really know how long it takes to sweep all the streets. We have a tendency, and I'm speaking for Matthew, I apologize, he can correct me later, but but we go out and sweep the trouble spots. And we kind of try to keep track of where we're going to go, but we don't keep good records of where they've gone nor how long it takes us to do it. And so Matthew kind of week by week, depending on the weather, how many leaves have fallen down, what kind of windstorms we've had. They kind of go by best practices and experience to say, let's go Village Green Drive first, then let's go over to Silvercrest Drive and hit that one. And oh, there's a spot over here. So I don't know if we will automate manual to the point where there's no people involved, but I think we will quit driving the the street sweeper. On streets that don't need it and hit the hotspots first, for instance.
Let me, let me clarify my question and say, take out the words automate manual services. Are there ways that we can save money? To the city by this much data collection and coordination? And what would that be? In other words, we're looking at an investment. What kind of savings could we be looking at?
Yeah, that's excellent question. I apologize. I don't have a good way to quantify that. We could look at a particular. Piece of information. So I would say that. Right now, we spend a lot of time collecting data. Let's use our pond inspection data. We collect time. We spend time collecting data and putting it in a book and checking a box that we did it. Then next year we inspect again. It would be nice to say this is worse than last year and that generates a letter to that homeowners association that they need to work on maintaining that. To do that now, we have to go back and look at the old data and the new data and maybe a couple of years worth of data to see what the trend is. And so I think the time savings will be in those kinds of things when we find a problem. That's hard to quantify that. I agree. It's an excellent question. What we're going to do though is we're going to start collecting data in a fashion that's easier to use instead of collecting data and mapping it on static maps. We've had spent a lot of money and a lot of time over the years. It was probably a halftime job for somebody to create those beautiful maps.
And Councilman Steckler, if I can, if I can add to that, anecdotally, I've seen. The introduction of GIS technology literally transform an engineering department and municipal government. And just to add to Director Todd, while I cannot. And just to add to Director Todd, while I cannot quantify it, I can tell you that it impacted the way the team worked. And as a result, we did not have to have so much administrative support and always having to hunt down documents. It was especially helpful in emergencies, you know, to pull up the real-time data to know the layers of data that have been collected over the years. It's like a file cabinet organized by geography. And that's where the savings comes in, is that the efficiencies that just come out of that. That intuitive reasoning that if we can do things and work and support the way the teams are doing their work rather than the way we'd like our file cabinets to look at City Hall. It's going to make a tremendous difference in how we operate going forward. So my personal professional experience has been nothing short of transformative. And I have to credit Director Todd. This has been on the runway pretty much since I began my tenure here. As an important unit of work to move our engineering department and all the other ways in which we can apply this tool into the better and best practice in municipal governance. So I really do applaud Director Todd for getting this off the ground with everything else he has on his calendar. Thank you.
I'll say, Councilmember Deckler, I think, I don't, so I don't have baseline data to compare very well. But I will take, I'm going to continue to watch for things and I'll report back to council the things that with aha moments we've had and the opportunities moving forward. I think you'll, you'll be able to get a gut sense that this is indeed, as the city manager says, can be transformational about the way we do our work. And for Matthew's group as well, again, I won't speak for him, but there's things he's even itching to put tablets in the hands of his people to collect the data or get work orders while they're out in the field instead of just getting instructions seven o'clock in the morning. I've been holding them back until we can tie, build that on top of a geographical information system. So when they do an inspection, it goes to a place we can find it again, instead of going on a paper that goes, gets filed somewhere. So.
Well, you, you did mention duplicated tasks.
Yeah.
And if you, if you could eliminate one duplicated task, you've got a cost savings right there.
Yeah. And so I can't say, for instance, my 2018, 2016 example there, I can't say those were apples for apples. But we spent $100,000 on the 2018 thing. That they started off with the raw videos. They didn't start off with somebody else's knowledge about where that hole was in that pipe. And I think, I'm not trying to pass, cast aspersions on the past, but I think it was one of those deals where people just didn't know. One that did happen during my time on council, Councilmember Deckler, you may remember this. Pavement condition reporting. We, we've just spent a bunch of money on pavement condition reporting. We've done that in the past. And Scott Smith, many years ago, had a schedule by which we would refurbish roads, depending on what their pavement condition reporting was. New staff came in, said, geez, I found an old report that says it's time to repave 35th. And some of us said, geez, I think we repaid 40, 30. Let's look in the council agenda summaries. And indeed, it was stored in the council agenda summary that we'd repaved one of those roads. So we, we came close to repaving a road that didn't need repaving. That was $700,000. We would not have got that close, but we came that close. We spent time getting a grant. We spent time designing that, thinking about it, putting it through the CFP process that cost us all energy. And it wasn't necessary. So we'll, we'll save money. Thanks.
Any further questions for Mike? Mike, thank you for that presentation. I think there's one more.
Yes, it's really the, what was requested and what we were planning to provide anyways was just a, an update. And what we have done to learn and grow from the last snowstorm. Our team performed admirably, but we always know there's a way to improve. And I've asked Director Todd to present on the work that he and Matthew have put together. So Mike.
And I'm going to turn it over to Matthew. He's running the show.
Ah, very good. Thank you.
Hey everybody, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, along with the citizens in the community. I'm going to share my screen here. So everybody should be able to see my first slide, February 12th through the 15th, snow response report.
Yes.
This first portion of it, I'm going to go through fairly quickly. I think everybody knows what the weather was like. On Friday, the 12th. Just in preparation, public works pre-treated the roads. We stuck to pretty much the priority routes and secondary routes. Those routes would include state route 527, state route 96, Seattle Hill Road and 35th. And as the secondary routes are 136, 25th, Silvercrest Drive, Trillium, Village Green Drive, 148, Mill Creek Boulevard and Mill Creek Road. On Friday night, the temperature was low of 25 degrees and I monitored the traffic cameras within the city and had a steady communication with the police department, watching for conditions to change. Snow began sticking on the road at approximately 9:40 PM and we activated the public works, the first public works crew at about 9:45. As soon as they got in, they began plowing immediately. On Saturday, the snowfall continued through the night. We continued to apply salt-sand mix to some of the risky areas, Neemley Hills and bridges. And a lot of it was spent as you lead up to intersections. Pole drive helps you go. It doesn't help you stop. So that was kind of a priority for us. We did hit some of the neighborhoods that had steep hills like Fairway, for example. And the first shift changeover happened at 7:00 AM. Or excuse me, yeah, 7:00 AM on Saturday morning. We worked 12-hour shifts and so every changeover from that point on happened at 7:00. On Saturday, the high was 30 and the low was 28. Moving into Sunday, the teams continued working through the night. The temperatures rose above freezing late in the morning and the snow let up just a little bit. For the first time in four years, I want to mention we did not have to close either Mill Creek Road or Mill Creek Boulevard, the hills specifically. We concentrated our efforts on those hills as far as snow and, or salt and sand. That all continued through Sunday and on into Monday. By Monday, the, the weather had let up a little bit. Temperatures had gone up. By Monday afternoon, both the state route 527 and SR 96 were barren wet conditions. And that left our focus on the secondary routes, specifically or mainly Silvercrest Drive. We kept plowing and applying de-icer in those areas until we had most of the roadways cleared and actually Monday, rolling into Tuesday, we were able to get out in some of the neighborhoods and help move some of the slush out. In preparation for this storm. We, of course, mounted the sander on our mini dump truck, as we call it, PW2. It's a two-wheel drive duly dump truck. We rented a backhoe. That was dropped off at about 11:00. We used it on Friday to get our sand and salt piles ready. We also mixed a full load of sand salt. The team pre-treated all priority routes and secondary routes with de-icer. We covered approximately 40 lane miles of road. There was a plan for two teams, a day and a night crew, 12 hours apiece. We actually anticipated a callback around 1:00 or 2:00 AM. That was significantly changed at about 9:40, as I mentioned earlier. That first shift had a pretty long day. We, of course, met with the police officers that were coming on shift and exiting as well. We had pretty good communication with them throughout the entire event. We worked with Kristen with the communications and marketing department. She sent out a press release to inform the public that there was a probability of snow and to expect unsavory conditions. Here you can see our priority and secondary route maps. Priority routes are covered in red, as I mentioned before, and the secondary routes are in green. Now into the meat of it, our operations. So on Friday, public works spent most of the day working on preparing for the, the snow that was supposedly coming. This included loading the sander on the truck, mounting the snowplow on our only four-wheel drive truck. Getting the de-icer ready, filling gas cans and trucks with fuel, pre-treating the roads and prepping chainsaws. Chainsaws because as everybody or most people know, trees tend to come down when the heavy snow sits on them for a while. We took possession of the backhoe. That was a 310 John Deere. I think that's probably the biggest backhoe that the city has rented. Since I've been here, I can say that for sure. The first team was called in and began plowing operations. They were called in at about 9:45. They showed up at about 10:15 and got right to work. They applied a heavy salt mix to the hills. And we staged the road closure signs in preparation in case Mill Creek Road or Mill Creek Boulevard needed to be closed. These activities, the plowing and sanding continued all night and into Saturday morning. Saturday morning, the first shift change took place at 7:00, as I mentioned earlier. And we went up and picked up another load of salt from the Wash Dot Yard in Everett. We continued to plow and we tried to keep all the hills clear of ice the best we could until the truck hauling the sander actually broke down. That took another crew member away from snow removal to focus on the truck in need of repair. And we actually weren't able to get that truck up and running until about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock on a Saturday night. Once that truck was back in operation, of course, we went back to focusing on the hills in particular, bridges and intersections. The crew worked all night and into Sunday. One particular thing about that night was we did use the backhoe that we rented. CNT was fairly substantial to push snow through most of the center turn lanes on state route 527. We picked up another load of salt on Sunday morning. And unfortunately, one of the day shift members was unavailable beginning on Sunday morning, which brought our day shift crew down to one. He was out applying the de-icer, taking turns applying the de-icer, dropping sand and salt. And whatever time he wasn't doing that, he spent plowing. I'm sorry?
You're behind one on the slides there.
Oh, I apologize.
There you go. Oops. There you go. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Well, moving right into expenditures, operations, we used approximately 1,900 gallons of de-icer. There was 103 crew hours worked in total. Actually, there was 111, but 103 overtime hours. And we went through 15 yards of sand salt mix. As far as cleanup goes, street sweeping is a continuous thing, as we just talked about a few minutes ago with Director Todd. We are short-staffed right now, so sweeping is kind of a, you know, for the highways and the sand cleanup, it's, it's a pretty, pretty much a priority. But as far as getting out of the other neighborhoods, we just haven't had time yet. You'll notice that I know there's still sand on the side of the highways, both 527 and 96. And as time permits, with the crew that we are able to have on hand, we will get to that. That does require sweeping throughout the middle of the night, particularly on the highways due to the fact that it's less traffic. And we can actually get more done as we were able to get into the center turn lanes. All the equipment, since the storm has been washed down, we use a vinegar solution to counteract the effects of the salt. And this was all the trucks, trailers, the sander, the plow, the rented equipment. There's a pretty substantial amount of work to be done as far as cleatum goes with these events. So as far as our capabilities are, de-icing, we have one de-icer unit. That unit is staged in the back of our four-by-four, one-ton super duty. That super duty is also the four-by-four plow truck that we've mentioned. The de-icer that we use is a salty brine, and this actually is something that the state uses as well. It's mostly used for pre-treating, but in the event like what we had recently with the snowpack from vehicles driving over the snow. It helps thaw that out considerably fast. The downside of that is it's a little expensive, and so what we don't want to do is just continuously run de-icer up and down the roads. And of course, we apply it through a tank-fed spray system. The sand and salt, we rented a backhoe to load the sander and to mix the sand salt. We apply that from a two-yard spreader. That's mounted in the bed of our two-wheel drive duly dump truck. It's actually, it's a light-duty dump truck. It's, you could almost call it a oversized pickup truck. This truck, since it is two-wheel drive, it does require chains. And the way this truck is, it works is with the, the situation of the weight, it's not a race car. So turning and starting to stop it even with a full load of sand is a bit of a challenge. The other aspect of this is that truck is getting a little long in the tooth and it tends to break down on a regular basis. It's pretty well-used and unreliable at this point. Plowing operations, we have one four-by-four super duty truck with a seven-foot plow. You can imagine that is not the best option for trying to plow a state highway or two of them, let alone the other arterial routes that we have that are going to drive a Seattle Hill Road. I am aware that funds were approved by the council in late 2019, and this was intended to upgrade the fleet with a couple of plowers and a couple of four-by-four trucks. There was no follow-up action taken as COVID-19 brought quite a bit of hesitation. I picked this project up or this task in August of last year. And I knew that we wouldn't be available, it wouldn't be available on time, even if I could go out and purchase the trucks. You know, August 1st of last year, it's at least no less than a six-month build time. So that wouldn't have helped us this year anyways. We did try looking for used trucks and we were hoping to add an extra plow to at least double our efforts. Unfortunately, I don't know what's going on with the market, but used vehicles have kind of taken a bit of a spike and, and they are not exactly cost-effective to buy one for a year. I reached out to contractors, small outfits, big construction outfits. And with the smaller outfits, they wanted a big emphasis on the pre-treatment. They wanted to handle that. Since we have the pre-treatment capabilities and we have the material that's needed to go down. That wasn't really a good fit for us. And as far as the larger contractors like KOB. They just were not interested in helping us this year. That's not what they typically do. They're, they're in the construction industry, not the snow removal industry. So they were not, unfortunately, they were not able to help us this year. One thing we were able to do is we did use the backhoe to plow some of the, the smaller roads and highway centers. I think that was a pretty huge help as, as the snow really began to thaw, that opened up those lanes quite a bit. I'll turn it over here to Director Todd. He's got a couple of things that he can cover himself.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Matthew. So the big question we were all asking is like, well, who's supposed to plow these highways? Because we got lots of reports and we all went out, or at least I went out, drove around myself and Matthew did too, and said, what's the difference between what's happening in Mill Creek on the state highway and other places? So here's kind of the background. We've done some investigations. So outside of the city, it's really clear. 164th up to I-5, Snohomish County does that. Seattle Hill Road, our east border, Snohomish County does that. It feels like a Mill Creek Road for folks like Adam Morgan that live out in that thing. But that is Snohomish County Road responsibility. Go talk to them about that one. 35th, north and south of the city, Snohomish County, same thing. And if you went out and drove around on Saturday and Sunday, probably would have found that it wasn't much different in Mill Creek than it was on in the county on 35th North and South. They were focused on other major main roads themselves. Inside the city, arterials and collectors is always our responsibility. Matthew labeled those earlier, Mill Creek Road, Seattle Road, all those. Residential neighborhoods, that's tertiary for the city. We've always said we've got primary and secondary routes. And the neighborhoods are not on that list. We've never had that much equipment. But the policy's always been, when time permits, they'll try to take a pass through the neighborhoods and help out. There are a few of those places that Matthew mentioned, like there is a hill in Fairway. There's a couple of neighborhoods that have a steep spot, so we'll go and de-ice those and try to hit those. But in general, we're staying on Village Green Drive. We're staying on Silvercrest Drive. We're staying on Dumas Road, Mill Creek Boulevard, those kinds of things. So the big question is, who plows the state highways? Well, the answer I found out is it kind of depends. Next slide there. So remember our state highways, Bot So remember our state highways, Bothelbert Highway, we call SR five two seven and hundred twenty eighth, hundred thirty second, that's SR ninety-six. If it's in the unincorporated area, Wash Dot has full responsibility and they do that. So if you were out driving around on Sunday, you could see that the road was clear between I five and McCullum Park on Highway ninety-six. And then it was snowy, packed snow, uh, like you'd go up to the mountains and see, once you got inside of Mill Creek city limits. In the incorporated area, there is technically under twenty-seven-five population. That's us. A W C and Wash Dot have a conformed agreement. It's been negotiated over the years. And so below twenty-seven-five, there's supposed to be an agreement by which Wash Dot would help out. We'll get to that in a second. Over twenty-seven-five, the cities have to do it. So Linwood, Bothell, Everett. If you go to those cities, you will see that they've got big trucks, commercial drivers licenses, big plows, they're doing that. But we're in that sweet spot, in some ways a sweet spot where we're below twenty-seven-five and should be able to get some help from Wash Dot. But next slide. So here's R C W that talks about it. And I've kind of highlighted there basically under six, that sub paragraph six, it says, the city or town at its own expense shall remove all snow. Except that the state shall, when necessary, plow the snow on the roadway. I read that and read that and scratched my heads. The city or town at its own expense shall remove all snow, except that the state should, when necessary, plow the snow on the roadway. Crazy. I don't understand that, but that's why this A W C conformed agreement came up. So next slide there, Matthew. So this goes back to twenty thirteen's, the last time it's been touched, but this goes way back to the nineties. Think about small towns in particular, they had the state highway as their main street. How do you figure this out? And so they went back to this paragraph D, gives the background I just gave you there. The agreed upon guideline was cities have responsibility for snow removal within their jurisdiction and that state shall, when necessary, plow on the roadway. But the when necessary is the, is the tricky thing. They came down to, when necessary, the state will plow snow with our concurrence on the traveled lane of the state highway on their way through the cities. And not having adequate plowing equipment. So in green, we don't have adequate plowing equipment. Over the years, we have said we don't have adequate plowing equipment. So the state has put their plows down on their way through the cities. And that's what they've always told us over the years. I remember hearing that. Matthew was at a, uh, uh, snow preparation event last fall and they kind of said, yeah, we're going to be busy on I five. We're busy on our routes. We may not get to you guys. And we kind of took that as okay, well, they would at least drop the plow on the way through the cities. And in fact, I was driving Saturday night and was looking to see what was going on. And I was going five twenty-seven, here goes a state plow. Twenty-five miles an hour going north on five two seven and then went east on ninety-six, twenty-five miles an hour the whole way through the city. Blade was up and I was going, this is just not right. This just doesn't make sense. They're going through our city. Why are they not doing this for us? We couldn't figure that out at the time, so we were just scrambling to do the best we could, but post facto, next slide here. Um, what was explained to me is that Wash Dot over the years, they used to have a plow that was focused on ninety-six and five two seven, but as the cities have grown and their budget has been reduced, they have kind of modified their plow routes. So over there on the green side, there is a plow that operates on I five and they get off at hundred twenty-eighth, go over to McCullum Park, turn around and go back. And so that's why that piece of the highway is plowed. Over on the right side of our city, the east side of our city, there's a plow that runs up and down Highway nine. And it gets off of Highway nine, it goes up ninety-six and comes over to the city limits, turns around and goes back down the hill and goes back up nine. Down on our south end, there's a plow that's dedicated to five twenty-four that goes over Linwood and out to Malpe. It goes along just the pieces that are not in incorporated cities. Down there, remember Bothell, it's over twenty-seven-five, so they got to take care of their own piece of that road. But you can see those little colored blobs I've drawn on there. That's where the state has diverted from their plow routes and done their responsibility in the unincorporated areas. But they don't have that plow that used to go through five twenty-seven and ninety-six as a regular plow route. So as much as they would like to help us out, they are using the clause that says when they go through the city, they don't go through the city. The one plow I saw going through the city, they told me afterwards was probably relocating from the five twenty-four route out to the route on, on Highway nine to help them out. So we basically are not getting the help from the state that is supposed to be per R C W. That's something we could argue another day. But at least for me, finally answered the question, why we don't see Wash Dot plows in Mill Creek anymore. It's a funding thing. And it's a function of the size of cities that are going on. Next slide. So here, real quick partnerships, I told the Wash Dot formally that we have authorized them and told them if they happen to be going through the town, please put your blade down. They were unclear on that. Somebody in the past probably said, we got K L B covering this. Don't worry about it. So they put a little check mark and said, just skip Mill Creek. So they will now have their blade down, but it won't happen very often because there are no regular routes. And they will not apply products. So while normally they plow in their own territory and then drop sand and salt out the back, they will not do that for us because they don't have a way to cross-charge it for us. So again, it's a budget thing. So we have to do our own, our own salt and, uh, and deicer. Snohomish County, we can call to request assistance. Neither Matthew or I knew the secret phone number for that event. It turns out that, uh, predecessors knew that secret phone number and they, they made it clear to us that we're not their priority. But if they have, if they can help us, we need to call and request assistance. We're going to formalize that and document that. So we have them more on call. That's on me. That's on Matthew for being new to the, to the rodeo this year. We didn't know who to call and thought we were just on our own. And truly, Snohomish County has no responsibility at all to, to plow our side, our, our state highways. That would just be if they had the time available for us. They will put the blade down through the city with they can. They're going to be on hundred sixty-fourth. They do sometimes go between Seattle Hill Road out there by Adam's House, down to hundred sixty-fourth. Having them run plow down through the city on our piece of Seattle Hill Road would be helpful. They will charge us for that service under the I L A, but that's not an expensive way to go. So that's, that's in terms of partnerships, that's what we have to look forward to. Next slide, I think is back to you, Matthew. Yeah. Looking ahead is for Matthew. Go ahead.
Thanks, Director Todd. Uh, so this is kind of the meat of the presentation for me anyways. Uh, Director Todd foreshadowed the need for snow removal equipment. And I've told you what we have and I, I hope that the message came through that it's pretty um, insignificant. Uh, that being said, part of this, uh, looking ahead is, is I'm hoping that the, uh, city council will, you know, take this as some food for thought. There's, you know, if we were going to do what the state does, we would need to buy what the state has. If we were going to, you know, load Sanders and push snow the way they do, we need the fifteen foot plow and the, in the fifteen yard dump truck. Um, we don't have those and I don't think that that's what we need. But as we look into the management of our resources, uh, Director Todd just covered the detailed understanding and preparedness of the county and state support. We can't really rely on much of that. Uh, communicating with the public, what we have and, and what is, uh, anticipated and, and what they could expect. Uh, that's something that I think we typically do anyways. Uh, we just want to keep that going. And then of course, producing results. Producing results means, you know, when the storms are forecasted, we'll implement our, our storm management plan. Uh, we manage the crew time and, and pre-priming schedules. Of course, we'll have all the available equipment staged, just as we did this last time. Uh, the level of, or the, what that equipment is, I'm hoping that we can talk about and potentially change what is on the, the list for purchase. Um, maintaining our aging fleet is, is a priority for me. That's the lifeblood of, of what helps my crew operate. And, uh, of course, keeping constant communication or frequent communication with the general public to let them know where we are, what we're doing, how we're doing it. And hopefully in the, in the future with a G I S system and the, uh, tracking software, we can, you know, not only tell everybody where the sweepers are and where they've been, uh, but also the plows. Um, our objective is to produce the best results possible. I monitor how the state's doing. Um, I will frequently take trips out to, uh, Interstate five and check on what the state's doing, where they're at, how those roads look. And it just kind of helps me get a comparison as to where we are as Mill Creek. Uh, ultimately it's up to the city council though, is, is to how far I can go with equipment for uh, keeping in mind that yes, we only get one or two good snowstorms a year. Uh, each snowstorm is different. It could be two inches of freezing snow, or it could be a foot of fluffy snow. Uh, we always want to provide the safest road conditions reasonably possible for all of the Mill Creek residents. Prep time, I, ideally, we want to set ourselves up for success. And with the equipment that we have now, I, I don't want to be Eeyore here, uh, but it's, it's just not very good. It's aged out. We have constant problems. Um, the deicer, we piece it together every fall and it makes it through another winter and we wipe our brow and move on. I also want to establish what the, the clear directives from the city council are, but I, I, I want to know what's your expectations or I want to know um, how clear do you want five two seven? You know, did, did, are these, uh, state routes or, or let's say priority routes expected to be in the same condition as say the interstate? Or with an understanding that we're not the interstate and, you know, a little bit of snow over the road is okay. Um, developing a winter storm management plan, that's something that I haven't been able to track down since I've been in this position. And I haven't seen one since I've worked here. Uh, so that's something that Director Todd and I will be focused on. Uh, developing a, a plan that we can, you know, everything will be lined out, laid out, thought through and pre-arranged. All the phone calls that need to be made will be taken care of. And, uh, I'm a big fan of checklist. So to me, this is a giant checklist and I love it. Um, the last thing I want to talk about is data gathering. Uh, right at the top, you see the cost for the event. And I can tell you right now that with all the overtime we had, uh, including the straight time and preparation, eight yards of salt, the rental equipment, all the fuel we used, the repair costs for the down truck. Uh, it was right around eighty-five hundred dollars. Aside from the cost of that, this also meant that the crew worked tirelessly on off hours for a, an extra hundred and three hours of, of overtime. So with that, I will open it up now for questions or comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to ask me or tell me.
Thank you for the presentation. I see Councilmember Cavalry's hand is up, but I don't see Councilmember Cavalry any longer. You may have taken a bathroom break. Couldn't wait any longer. Does anyone else have a
Can we clear the screen? I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bond.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, Todd, uh, it, it would seem to me that there's two things going on here. Can we not partner with the, the Snohomish County that has all this stuff that is driving down our streets and say, look, we'll pay X amount a year as an insurance plan. And then when it comes time, if this event happens, whether it's a X amount a day or whatever, you guys, when you're driving through our town, you keep that blade down and move the snow. Same thing with Was Dot. I mean, they're, they're driving through anyway. It's ridiculous and kind of offensive that, that they would lift the plow.
Yes, and I think that's the point of the partnerships. And I've got good relationships with the new management up at at Wash, at Snohomish County. Again, it's on me. I should have, should have known to call Kelly Snyder and say, how do we, we're both doing our jobs. How do we do snow response and who do I call on that day? Uh, I think we have done that in the past. We've done better with the county in the past. But they will always tell us their first priority is their citizens because their citizens pay money for roads that we as Mill Creek citizens don't do. So they're gonna, they're gonna hit their spots first, but they are willing and able to help us when they're not first priority on their own routes.
Yeah. So I, I'd be in favor of us at least pursuing some reasonable partnerships in advance and, and hammering it out before the events occur. Secondly, you know, we've got a director saying he's got a vehicle that's not functioning for the intended purpose. And I, if we don't have a policy in place to replace vehicles that are not operational, then we need to have one. If you need a truck to do public works, we got to buy a truck. So I, I didn't see that here, but I, I actually would have preferred you say, we want a two thousand twenty-one Ford F three fifty super duty, blah, blah, blah. And it's sixty thousand or it's eighty or it's a million dollar, whatever. But I, it sounds like we need to buy you a truck. And I, I would be in favor of doing that if, if Director Todd and the city manager and the council all agree that that would be a smart place. I don't, I don't think it's not reasonable to expect public works to go and do their job with the equipment that is not operation.
Is the truck we need different from the one that we authorized that hasn't been filled yet?
Matthew, go ahead.
I can tell you guys, um, that part of the reason I haven't moved forward with, with any kind of purchase of, of a truck or anything like that is I wanted to get a clear understanding of you guys' expectations. What, what kind of road conditions are you expecting us to achieve throughout a snowstorm? Cause that dictates what kind of equipment I buy.
So I will say for me, I don't, I do not want to spend a bunch of money because three or four days out of three hundred and sixty-five, we have a little snow on the ground. People can maybe stay home. There's some reasonable, I mean, we, we spent all of last year staying home for all this other stuff. Uh, we can get DoorDash and other ways to get groceries and candles and stuff delivered. Uh, it doesn't make sense to spend a, an unreasonable amount of money. Now there's some wiggle room there between what one person might think is unreasonable or another, but I wouldn't, I want some common sense here. Can we partnership to get some of the main roads cleared with the folks that have the equipment already in place? And then what do you need for a truck that can not only service some of these snow needs, but also tackle some of the other challenges that you deal with every day, rain or snow or, or sun? You know, you, there's other things that public works uses trucks for. You, you, and so maybe we can find a vehicle that, that will meet uh, a few of your needs and not just specifically a snow vehicle that then sits parked rusting. Not, cause if it's not being driven and it's just sitting there waiting for a snow event, that is, that's just not, I, I don't support that. But I suspect there's other things you do every day in public works where a truck would be needed. And this truck, maybe we can get a multi, uh, a mixed. I don't know if that's even reasonable. You feel free to tell me those vehicles don't exist. I don't know. I'm not a public works, uh, professionals.
No, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Bond. And I do want to buy a new truck. And, and there's all sorts of great attributes to a new truck and the equipment that we can do or put on it. Um, but the other thing to think about is I don't want to buy a new truck and then have to rent a backhoe every time I want to put something in that truck. So that is kind of the root of this conversation. I, I didn't, um, I think we can dive into the, the details at a, a future date, but you know, what I'm thinking about is if I buy a truck with a sander, I need to be able to load that sander. So why not buy a tractor, seeing how I could use that not only for snow and loading sand, but there's a plethora of other uses that I can use that tractor for.
Well, I'm just one, but I'd be in favor of maybe you putting up a wish list of this is what I'd like. If a money was unlimited, this is what I minimum I need. And then we got some wiggle room in between sort of, you know what I'm saying?
That's fair. I can do that.
Uh, if, if I need some people to agree with me, but I would be in favor of seeing that.
That's our, gonna be our general approach. We're looking at the overall fleet management thing. There was a proposal. Council did have a budget amendment to pay for that proposal, but Matthew and I a couple of weeks ago said, hold it. If we're trying to keep what, if we're trying to keep five two seven, the same way that Everett or Wash Dot could do it with their level of plows, that's a different vehicle than what Nathan Beagle and Gina had lined up. And so we want to be astute about that. And then Matthew's pointing out, nobody ever really thought about how you get this, get the materials up into this big truck. So we're going to step back a little bit, take a look at this and do the planning. Now, these things take twenty-nine weeks to build is what, what happened to us. So this is a, needs to be a thoughtful, thoughtful discussion. So we owe you some more information uh, on fleet management, overall approach, and then come to you and ask for some money.
Councilmember Cavalry, I didn't forget about you. I went to call on you first. So Councilmember Cavalry followed by the mayor, uh, by Councilmember Morgan, then Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I had to run to the restroom as I see you're doing right now. So, uh, more power to you. Couple of things, couple of questions, couple of comments. Um, we've done this before. We've had the same conversation before, maybe not with the folks in charge now. But we as a council, we approve these vehicles before. We, we've done this dance app. I personally thought they were purchased already, that we're not even having this conversation in twenty nineteen when we approved it in the biennial budget. So I, I guess I'm a little perplexed by that. Um, and secondly, we're still trying to figure out what roads we plow and that we we're still trying to figure out what roads we plow and that we don't plow. I'm sorry. That's just ridiculous. That frankly makes no sense to me. Regardless of what RCWs say, our citizens live in this vicinity and we have a duty, we're obligated to clear the streets for them, simple as that. Whether they want to pass or buy, we can't rely on somebody wanting to put the blade down for us. That's I don't even know what to say to that. Secondly, when we had this discussion two years ago, we were specific that we wanted a Plan B and a Plan C in place, that if you had to have somebody on call or some sort of per diem process where you pay the fee, that all you do is pick up the phone and you think it's going to snow and Joe, the snow guy shows up, we were okay with that. We understood that there's some costs involved and everybody understood. We didn't want to replicate what had happened before. But here we are. And thirdly, there was a comment about pre-treatment that we don't want to get, bring in a service because they want to do the pre-treatment as well. Well, look, I'm okay with getting, we're either going to get in the snowplow business or get out of the snowplow business. Either way, the streets still need to be cleared. So regardless of the nuances to it, we need to figure out a way that we're not having this conversation a month later after the snow. I think it's it's kind of a disservice to our citizen and we're not living up to the obligations of keeping our streets safe. There's a lot here and a lot more I want to say. I want to hear from some other council members too, but but we're not sure what streets we're supposed to plow is really not an acceptable answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to thank you, Matthew, for what you and your team did this past winter. I think you guys did overall fantastic job, especially since you shed light upon the difficulties you had to do such work. Given that, that I think what you did was sufficient and good work. You asked us to give you a guideline on what type of work we're looking for. So what you did this year, I think, was good. And if you can do it with another vehicle with a plow and a backhoe, minimal cost that we can do, that's fantastic. If it's easier and equally cost efficient for an outside company to do it, then go that way too. So you know your capabilities and what your team can handle. Just go do what you need to do. Thanks.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I do, I want to thank Matthew for the presentation that he just gave us. And also I have a few things to say and they in no way reflect upon Matthew because Matthew has just taken on this role and I think he's working extremely hard. And the staff that we have is working overtime and really worked very hard to clean our streets. But what I have to say is that I'm frustrated and I have to agree with Councilmember Cavalieri that I thought that we had a truck to help plow coming. And so I was surprised to read in the paper that we did not. And so in the future, I think there needs to be a little bit better communication regarding this so that we know what's going on and don't find out about it in the paper. And I also, I'm glad to see that Matthew has down to have his snow plan in his list of things to do. I think Matthew, I've been talking to him. I think he thinks a lot like I do about handling things. And I'm a former property manager and I know I would go into my year, every year, hiring contractors to handle the snow for each property. So and having that plan and knowing who they were and having it in place, and I would carry those numbers with me the whole winter in case I needed them. So I knew when to call. So one of my questions had been, why didn't we have a contractor lined up for the beginning of the year? When we knew that we might need them? And that's not something that was on Matthew. He wasn't there to do that at the beginning of the year. But I think that's something that we should make sure we have lined up in the future so that we are covered. But I know you all worked really hard and I also am one hundred percent agreement with Councilmember Bond that, you know, if things are aging out and you cannot do the proper job with the tools that we have, then we need to get a proposal to council so that we can sit down and look at what we have and what we need. And we can approve for you to have the proper equipment to do the proper job. We shouldn't expect you to do a job without the proper tools. So I one hundred percent agree with Councilmember Bond on that. So I just want to throw those things out there and make sure that in no way is this complaint on Matthew. That I just would like to have seen a little better planning from way back in the past, the beginning of everything coming out instead of finding things out in the papers. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Any more questions, comments? Michael, I think you've got a lot of feedback, so I trust it in the coming months. You can come back to us with a proposal for a plan for being prepared for the coming year and what equipment needs you guys might suggest we consider?
That is correct. And I want to acknowledge all the constructive feedback we received from council. Bottom line is we're under new management. And the questions that we're talking about and what I will frankly say are well-placed criticisms, I take that responsibility, full responsibility. The leadership shown by Director Todd and Combs and the way in which they have struggled to keep up. The easiest thing would have been for these two leaders to say, well, it's already in the plan, council approved it, let's buy those trucks. It's really, it speaks to their integrity and frankly, the trust that I placed in them that they said, slow down here, Mr. City Manager. Let's not spend this money. We don't think it's well-spent. I will also say that in, I think as early as August, September, we reached out to the exact same contractor that we did last year, namely KOB. Can we have this Plan B backup contract? Not only did we not get a response from them, but then when we finally did, the answer was no. Matthew Combs and Mike Todd worked very hard to develop Plans B and Plan C for us. Including looking at possibly purchasing used four-by-four vehicles where we could purchase the plow equipment for the front. And we kept looking at it. We didn't want to gamble against the weather or with the weather, but what we were looking at was again, this original authorizing legislation from council to buy something that these two new leaders that I have tremendous confidence in simply said, not so fast. So it did bite us this year that we didn't have the equipment ready. But I'm ultimately here to report that we didn't spend or squander the tax dollars on the equipment that in any instance would not have done job according to the new stringent specs and standards that Director Todd and Mr. Combs have outlined as part of our expectations going forward. Finally, I do want to say that in bringing you up to date on what happened with the storm, we did want to get a better, clearer feedback from you on what is expected. I think we have heard that. We will be coming back to you in the very near future with our plan going forward. So we thank you for that feedback and Mr. Combs and Director Todd, thank you for your work during the storm as well as putting together this report for council.
Thank you to all three of you. Is there any?
Thanks, guys.
Any further staff reports tonight, Michael?
No, Mayor. That concludes for this evening. Thank you.
We don't have an executive session tonight, so we'll end the meeting with an opportunity for audience communication. Would anyone like to speak to the council? I see Will's, we'll go ladies first. So Barbara followed by Will and then anyone else. Barbara, name, address, and you know the drill.
Thank you, Mayor. Barbara Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place, southeast Mill Creek. It's really hard to follow up after that very intense presentation about snow removal, which is a key thing for me. But I do want to go back to what Councilmember Steckler was talking about. I want to thank him for the opportunity to recycle our electronics. I have a bunch that I need to recycle. Will you be, come on us, will you be presenting or putting out the guidelines for what is accepted and what is not accepted? Great, on social media, I guess. So I have to look for that. Maybe you'll, I'll be able to do that. I, yes, he's still here. The chief is here, being that he's new. I know in the past, now putting up my other interest, in the past, Citizen Patrol has helped with traffic control. And I hope that you will speak to the chief if you haven't already to see if we can be of assistance to you on that day. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, name, address in three minutes. Unmute yourself first, please. Unmute yourself. We want to hear you.
Unmute, okay. Computer. Will Nelson, one four nine two five, twenty-ninth Drive, southeast Mill Creek. Off topic, but went out yesterday and I tend to think the public has canceled COVID. I'd never seen so many people out and about and doing things. Fortunately, they were wearing their masks. Kind of reminded me of the brew hall with Texas and Mississippi or Alabama between them and Biden. But on to city business, something that's always gets in my craw is we seem to be very adept at paving thirty-fifth, one sixty-fourth a little bit, Seattle Hill Road and shuffling thousands of people through our city on a daily basis. Yet we cannot seem to grasp the concept that it's all the people who live in these little subdivisions that are paying the damn bills and we don't get squat. Why is that? And I understand the reasons behind it. And I went through this with the city of Bellevue. When one year when I lived up on top of the hill and we got sixteen inches of snow and couldn't get out for quite some time. And I understand the necessity of plowing the main arterials. But if the people who need to use the main arterials can't get out, what the hell is the reason? What's the hell's the purpose? You know, we pay the damn bills. Nobody else pays the damn bills. So how about a little more consideration for those who pay the damn bills? How about that? That would be nice. That would be very nice. Now, I understand the implications of buying forty-five-ton trucks and forty plows to plow all the streets. We don't want that, as Mr. Bond said. Councilmember Bond said. But you know, a little more consideration for all of us doofuses who live in the little subdivisions who pay all the taxes would be appreciated. Enough of my rant. Next item. The hole in the pavement that Mike Todd was talking about may well have been Sweetwater in that project we had with replacing that stormwater line. And I recall that the previous Public Works Director had discussed starting out with a little hole in the pavement and going to a big hole in the pavement. So that may be where that picture comes from. Anyway, thank you for listening to my rant and I hope everybody has a good day. Bye.
Thank you, Will. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-four and we will re-adjourn two weeks from tonight. See everyone then, unless we see you at the town hall next week.
Hi, everybody.
Bye. Take care.
Thank you.